Eric? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I believe is illegal. It's a violation of the Open Meetings Law, Section 105. And number two, it's not on the agenda. What was on the agenda was a motion to discuss the presidential search. When did this new agenda come by?
Uh, one second. And so, all in favor? We're in...
Just read it quickly.
If it was my call in favor, was everyone except for... This is an option. Okay.
But first, the question on the agenda.
I...
I did not receive that agenda either. It was to discuss the presidential search, period. So on that basis, I vote no.
Okay.
Since I did not get the agenda in an appropriate timeframe.
I vote no as well. So we have...
That's three no's.
Three no's.
And that particular agenda, it states an illegal purpose for an executive search.
I'm sorry?
It...
It's matters relating to the presidential search. Let me explain what I have here. I believe that the motion is performed to the Open Meetings Law. Let me explain why. First, Section 105F of the Open Meetings Law permits a public body to go into executive session to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Clearly, the discussion of the choice of appointment of an outside counsel is a matter leading to appointments. Second, in an opinion, October 15th, 1996, by Robert Freeman, who is the executive director of the New York State Committee on Open Government, quotes from the appellate division case that states that the phrase in Section 105F, "A particular person," quote-unquote, "does not mandate that the individual or question be identified by name." Therefore, the fact that the motion before us does not mention a specific name for the person or persons to be considered for the appointment as an outside counsel does not meet legally deficient. Third, in the same opinion by Robert Freeman, he quotes from other portion of the appellate division case and states, "The public body must identify the subject matter to be discussed," and that Section 105F does require that any motion to enter into executive session describe with some degree of detail the nature of the proposed discussion. I believe that the motion before us does exactly what it states that the discussion was, related to the appointment of an outside counsel, considering whether the outside counsel should undertake a complete review and evaluation of the activities of the Presidential Search Committee to enable the entire Board of Trustees to review such work activities and practices and to determine the appropriateness thereof. Fourth, I believe that it is within the scope of Section 105F to go into executive session to discuss the appointment of the new president for NCC, more than that Section 105F specifically refers to it to be permissible to discuss in executive session matters leading to that appointment. In that context, I believe it is totally within the scope of Section 105F to discuss matters relating to the performance of the search committee and its members, since it was the very purpose of the search committee and its members to take actions leading to the appointment of the president for NCC. To put it briefly, the performance of the search committee and its members is by definition a matter leading to the appointment of the president. Finally, for some reason, the board quotes not to go into executive session to discuss these matters, it does not mean that these matters will not be discussed tonight. Quoting from December 2nd, 2009, opinion of Robert Freeman, "The Open Meeting Law is permissive, although it may conduct executive sessions in circumstances authorized in Section 105-1 of the Open Meetings Law. There is no obligation to do so. If, for example, a motion to enter a particular executive session to discuss a matter leading to the appointment of a particular body is not carried by a majority vote of the public body, that entity may choose to discuss that." All right? All opposed?
Is our motion the one?
I oppose.
Is the motion to consider a motion? Motion that is not on the calendar. To put it on the calendar.
I don't know how to put that motion on the calendar.
Okay, so your vote is a yes?
Putting it on like a...
On this calendar?
What calendar?
Why are you putting it on the calendar? In place of?
No. We were through the presidential search, discussing the presidential search in executive session. So now, I make a motion.
So we are now adding this on when we're actually going to be talking about possibly doing this in executive session. We're just gonna do it now.
No.
I don't understand. It's a fait accompli that we're going to...
No, we're just making...
Then why do we... Then why do we need to add it when you have the generic language that says "to discuss the presidential search"? That's generic language. We could talk about anything about the presidential search.
The motion has already been approved.
I know, that one. I'm asking you about this one.
This one has already been approved.
What's the vote?
Six to three.
It is? Who voted no? I vote no.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no on this second motion. I'll vote for the motion to discuss the presidential search, which I did already. But I don't... I never got this second agenda.
I'm very confused. But I vote no because I'm confused. If I'm confused, I vote no.
Transparency.
I agree with the ad. I think we just need the generic language.
Talk about any aspect of. Why do we need to...
All right. At this point, we have a motion to go into executive session. I approve six to three.
Right. Motion to discuss the presidential search?
Correct. I am concerned with the presidential search.
You realize that my position is a violation of law, and if someone brings a court action, you're taking the chance that you're gonna be adjudicated in violation of the law. You understand that, don't you?
Over which motion? I'm sorry.
Motion to discuss the... That was approved. You didn't vote for that?
This second one is no. It's not been approved. Now, I bring forth a motion to discuss an executive session in budget for FY 2014 related to personnel matters, specific persons.
Excuse me, that is clearly not an item...
You're not a member of this board. Thank you very much.
That is not an item of executive session. Since I don't have a...
Because?
Because I want to premise a little reason.
You wrote this, so write up why that's not permissible.
I'll give you the open meetings, so I will give you the reasons.
Tony has it right here.
As a member of the public, can I say something?
Yeah, but this time...
It's related to personnel matters, related to the FY 2014 budget.
It's related to the Public Officers' Law.
Right.
I would like to make a comment about the Public Officers' Law.
Not at this time, though. Right now, so...
Really?
I don't think that there's a spot on this right now, not for public knowledge.
Regarding Public Officers' Law.
Please bear with me. I don't know all the rules of game of the open meetings, but we will follow them through. I'm trying to read the roadmaps. Just for the record, okay? Open Meetings Law, all right? To conduct upon a majority vote of its total membership, taking into open meeting pursuant identifying generally areas of interest, matters which imperil the public's safety of disclosed, any matter which may disclose the identity of a law enforcement agent, woman, former, information relating to current or future investigation or prosecution of a criminal offense which would imperil the effect of law enforcement disclosed...
You got me. Only kidding.
Good to be on the record. Discussions regarding proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, the preparation, freezing, or administration of examinations, and the purpose... I'm sorry, the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities or sale, or exchange of securities held by such public body, but only when publicly would substantially affect the value thereof. Attendance's executive session shall be permitted to any member of the public body and any other person authorized by the public body. Okay. In a related vein, has been advised, and this is the New York State Department of State Committee on Open Government, October 15th, 1996, in a related vein has been advised that the motion describing subjects to be discussed as personnel or specific personal matters is inadequate, and that the motion should be based on the specific language of 105-1F. For instance, a proper motion might be, "I move to enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons." Such a motion would not, in my opinion, have to identify the person or persons who may be subject to the discussion. By means of that kind of motion suggested above, members of the public body and others in attendance would have the ability to know that there is a proper basis for entry into an executive session. Absent such detail, neither the members nor others may be able to determine whether the subject will be promptly considered behind closed doors.
I... You just read the statute, which says for the cases in which an executive session is authorized, okay? Not where it's mandated, where the board can have it. I don't believe that the enumerated purposes that you stated before fall within those sections. And what I am telling you is, there will be a court action, and if I'm right, and a court so holds, this board and the members who attend that executive session will be adjudicated in violation of the law. Do you really want that?
Chuck, can you speak up? We can't hear you.
I'm being advised on the legality of what we're supposed to do here. We had... We're supposed to have a motion to look... Oh, where's the language? What's the proper language that we have here for this? To entertain a motion. Here we go. Okay. The motion was to discuss the choice of an outside counsel, which we had a complete review and evaluation of the activities, and the search committee to enable the entire Board of Trustees to review such work activities and practices, and to determine the appropriateness thereof. Executive session being warranted to prevent discussions of matters related to the performance of counsel members and selection of a particular candidate. So at this time, I am hoping...
That was defeated.
I'm sorry?
That was defeated. By four. Doesn't carry.
It's not defeated. It doesn't carry. We're still going into executive session to discuss the presidential search.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Right. So what'd you read that again? Well, I don't understand.
So the motion carried, we continue to discuss the presidential search, and the issues Mr. Donilon, we are approved to go into executive session to discuss the presidential search.
We have a vote of six for that motion, three against. The three against were Anthony Cronatia, John DeGrasse, and Ed Powers. The motion carried, six to three.
You don't think that's overly broad? You don't think that's in clear violation of the cases that I cited to you in a memo to this board this week?
Well, as I tried to... Excuse me. As I tried to be more specific, and you're denying us the chance to be more specific for it. The motion that...
I understand that.
The motion that was here, and I...
Because I sent you a memo where I said, "Our appellate division, the second apartment, is the most aggressive when it comes to violations of the Open Meeting Law." I sent you cases where legislators were held in contempt, where a school board was held in contempt because they came up with a subterfuge to go into executive session to avoid holding hearings in public.
Mr. Cronatia...
And you want to put this board in jeopardy.
Mr. Cronatia, on the calendar, in public session, we have a specific finding to discuss matters relating to the hiring of a particular person or particular entity, which is in the Open Meetings Law, which you are refusing to consider as a motion.
Right.
What is wrong with that motion? You're asking us to be specific, to be in compliance with the Open Meetings Law. I am trying to be more specific, and you are denying us a chance to discuss.
I'm addressing one thing and one thing...
Which is?
You want to go into an executive session to discuss the presidential search, and I tell you that under the law... I've been the appellate division several times on the Open Meetings Law. All right? Under the law, that is broad, our appellate division will pounce on it, and it's gonna be deemed...
Mr. Cronatia, from what I'm understanding, because you have not received the second version of this, okay? Which was recognized, and then you may have had an issue, I then tried to bring this up as a separate motion to be considered before the board, to be able to go into executive session.
Who said this?
Well, Mr. Cronatia, you're denying the chance for us to be specific and comply to the law.
We can have every discussion we want in public. What I'm saying is, you can't defeat the law. The law favors open and public discussion of all items, except in very rare instances. You can't defeat the purpose of the law by coming up with some sort of an artifice to go into executive session and hide things from the public. The public policy of this state is very good. I sent a memo, a detailed memo, explaining what the policy of this state is. I gave you chapter and verse. I cited the appellate division cases. Our appellate division! Didn't anyone read that?
Mr. Cronatia, the Open Meetings Law was very simple. 105-F, I'm sorry, 105-F, medical, financial, credit, employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. I am citing chapter and verse of the Open Meetings Law as to why you need to go into executive session. And you are denying such.
The motion at hand is to go into executive session to discuss the presidential search. What I'm saying to you is, that is an unvalid topic for a vote on executive session.
What is... I'm sorry, Mr. Cronatia. What is the objection to the motion that is here?
It... 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 It...
No, no. What is the objection to the motion? The original? The one, the original one that's here?
Original?
Yeah.
Just the generic language.
No, that's generic. That's generic language. Did you have to...
I'm not saying we can't discuss it.
No, I have to say, my apologies. I thought that this was... Well, they gave it to me, and they said this is the...
I only have the generic one.
Yeah, I only have the generic one. I never saw the generic one.
I only got that along address.
Wow.
The generic one was in the board calendar, everybody last week.
It was all agenda.
Or the proposed agenda. It was distributed to everybody. The world got it. Did you people get it?
No.
Yeah.
I wonder which trustees got that one.
No, no, not the amended one, the one that said we're gonna discuss the presidential search. That was all NCC, right?
Yeah.
Right?
That's right.
And what I'm saying to you is that is generic. It does not satisfy the Open Meetings Law, and that is a violation of the Open Meeting Law.
I understand that, so... I have brought a motion to the floor to make it more specific, to be compliant. And as far as I understand...
That was defeated.
This was not defeated. What I understood was that this was already out. So I'm asking members of the board to consider reading what we have here, so that we can go downstairs and discuss.
Which is this?
That's even worse.
Right.
That's a double violation of the Open Meetings Law. We can't discuss in executive session something that's not on the calendar?
Which is the motion that we got to put on the calendar. I was... I just have a motion to put that on the calendar.
Right, it was defeated.
Let's try this again. If everyone has read this motion, okay? The one that we're looking at here.
Right.
Okay.
The new motion?
The motion... I'll read it again.
No, 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 no.
You don't have to read it because you're putting the cart before the horse.
No, no.
We should be discussing the presidential search here, out here in the public, including this. Then we could go into executive session for specifics, but we should discuss this thing here, out here, not go discuss it in an executive session before we've told people what we're gonna be doing. If you want to do this specifically regarding the exec... The open... The presidential search committee?
Gentlemen?
You do it out here in the public, in the light of day.
Gentlemen, I would be more than happy to. I would be more than happy to pick on your offer, and then when we come back to the particular specifics, then we will discuss.
What are you going? I have four. Okay?
Mr. Powers, I have the four.
Please send a distributed version two first to all trustees.
And has that been distributed?
The full packet?
Yep.
So I just want to talk. We really have the tenants. What we'll do is we'll both utilize meeting minutes, since we have no choreography. We'll both report just handing in. How ominous that bells are ringing. I call for approval of the minutes.
I have a problem with the minutes. I have so many problems today, George. I just don't understand.
Version one, version two.
Let's hold one second. Let's wait until everyone is on version two. Please let me know when you have version two available.
All I have is version one. I don't have version one. Version one talks about a resolution that was passed, but it wasn't passed.
Well, let's just wait. This is our end. By the way, version one and version two, I can tell are identical except for the first page.
Well, why don't we get it so we're all on the same page? Okay?
Is the second version available to the public?
Well, it has to be under law.
If it's a...
But we've never seen it.
No, I think he just said that the only thing that is different is the first page.
Right, so can we see the different part of it?
I don't know. I'm trying to find it.
Kimberly, I'll have them make sure that they have something out for you guys.
I'm referring to the minutes of May 16, 2013, where on the second page, it says page two at the top. It says...
I'm sorry, Chuck. Say that again?
The draft of the minutes of May 16, 2013, on the seventh page...
Hold it before you go anywhere. May 16.
Page two, May 16. Item two, it says trustee Donnelly introduced the following resolution, okay? And then after the resolution, "It is resolved that the board trustees suspend the presidential search pursuant to the email communication of the chancellor of the SUNY system there in May 14, 2013. Trustee Donnelly moved the motion, and trustee Adams seconded the motion. Motion carried three to five." It should be motion defeated three to five.
Hold it. Is it item two?
Item two.
It says your motion defeated.
Well, I have, in my packet...
You have a draft. Mine is pink.
Well, I have a white draft.
I have a big draft.
They gave you pink, George, and they gave me white. I don't know what that means, but I tell you, I can read.
I think I have the revised packet. Set down.
I don't have a pink one.
And George, and Arnie doesn't have a pink one, and I don't think...
I don't have a pink one either.
I don't consider myself special, and I had not seen it.
You have one, or you don't?
I have pink, yeah.
You have pink.
I have pink.
You have pink. Well, I don't have pink.
Okay.
I have one pink sheet.
Tony, if you want to take a look on this sheet...
And this says the May 30 minutes will be emailed to you by the end of the day.
Okay. What you were...
No, I want to see what... I want to see. I want my copy.
I will give you my copy, Mr. Cronatia.
Take your copy?
I will give you my copy.
I was gonna walk right in because I'm gonna have to abstain anyway since I wasn't here.
Absolutely.
You may have mine.
Okay.
You can have mine for all of this. Okay.
Well, I see trustee carried the motion. Motion defeated three to five. Okay. And I'm assuming that the pink one, as opposed to the white one, is the accurate draft.
What about the purple?
Oh, correct. George, if you don't know, who would know?
Ms. Anne, I will ask her, since I don't do the color coding.
Hi, Emmy.
And on the minutes from the May 14 to May 16...
Those are the new ones with the changes in it.
The pink ones have the new changes.
The white gets ripped up.
And the blue ones are... Are the...
I'll take my pink back. You're welcome to have my...
Mr. Cronatia, in view of the corrected May 16 minutes that have been updated, do you have any other objection concerning the minutes?
Well, I have to look at that, don't I? I don't know what else has been changed. I want to look at it. Now, as long as we have it... Oh, yeah. All right. Let me just read the whole thing.
Sure. So the version that was sent to the public was that the corrected version, the pink version, or the white version?
The white version was the incorrect one.
That was sent to the public?
It was not, yes, because they have to... Tony contacted me and said that I should have... I had motion carried three to five, and I should have had defeated on it.
I see.
So that, I had to make that change.
Thank you, Anne.
The May 16 minutes, is there a motion on regarding that?
I was just going to that. I have... Do I have a motion to consider the minutes?
For May 16?
The revised minutes are May 7.
Oh, May 7. I want to go look at that. So we're approving three sets of minutes tonight. Is that what it is?
I looked, and it's correct.
We got a busy month.
While we're on May 7, I cannot sign on May 7 because I was absent, so Anne is the chair.
Chuck, do you want me to give you the minutes also?
You can vote on some of those. I'm trying to finish a little bit. You have voting on some of them.
Oh, I'm just saying I can't sign it. Somebody has to sign it.
Oh, we do?
Well, I'm the secretary. I signed it.
Oh, as a sign. I got you.
But I wasn't here.
Another rule of protocol. I'll sign with Mr. Donilon. May 7, the date is approved. This is an interesting process. It's like learning how to fly a bird over like a plane.
I don't speak for anybody, but I read the May 7 minutes.
Okay. So do I have a motion to consider the minutes?
I...
Do I have a second?
To approve the minutes?
To approve the minutes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Why were you looking at me, George? Okay.
And I'm abstaining.
There is one abstention. And John, do you want to abstain on the minutes?
Well, no, I read them. I just got to sign them, and I can't...
Okay, so you can vote on them. Okay, so we have nine, zero, or eight, zero, one. Like baseball spot. All right, are we to sign for these minutes?
I signed if Z did it.
Okay, the revised minutes of the meeting of the May 16, 2013 are presented for approval. Do I have a motion to consider the May 16th?
You've got it.
Mr. Cronatio, do I have a second? Do you have a second to approve the minutes of May 16th?
I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
Okay.
And so do I.
Two abstain. Any against? Seven, zero, excuse me. Okay. The revised minutes of the May 30th, 2013 are presented for approval. Do I have a motion to consider those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Marty, so it's a second?
Yep.
Okay. All four?
Okay.
Okay. Any against? Any abstentions? Finance and Capital Committee, John?
Are we reading through every one of these?
Um, we are in open meeting, so we are going through.
No, are we presenting them in total or...
Yeah, we're gonna go through them in total. All I have to do is, Tony, I will have you be online introducing the expenditures.
Sure.
Okay. Page three, resolve.
All right, the Finance Committee, the Finance and Capital Committee met and Finance Committee approved the following resolutions, which I will now briefly recapitulate and then make a motion for their approval by the full board. The first is a resolution amount of $50,000. Am I on the right list?
Yes, you're correct.
For Fisher developmental strategies. The second is a resolution...
We gotta do them one by one, Tony. So just finish...
We don't do, we don't...
Can, can you do them all in total?
We normally do them.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, please.
The second resolution is resolution 60842 in the amount of $954,978.88 for the lease payment at 500 Endo Boulevard, the NCC North Harris. The third resolution, item C, is requisition 61798 in the amount of $152,833 for cleanup damage due to Hurricane Sandy. A team will be reimbursing that amount to the college. C is resolution 61909, the amount of $120,000 for official funds for upcoming expenses for computer repairs and data writing. What's that?
That's D.
Say that again?
Yeah, that was item D.
Yeah, I didn't say that? Okay. All right, I call this. E, requisition 62010 in the amount of $177,862.13 to purchase services to repair and maintain Liberty Air Conditioning units and other HVAC equipment systems. Resolution F, items 59363 and 61518, the amount of $178,838.85 for purchase and install 22 Macintosh computers and ancillary hardware, software, and music department meant to replace other student computers in the reading department and other activities. Item FG, requisition 61769, 61792, 61795, 6186 in the amount of $120,912.18 for the general support for small repair, remodeling, and construction projects. This, once again, is a cumulative of your expenditure. And H, resolution H, 61434, the amount of $130,943.76 for the replacement of pickup trucks for snowplows to clear campus roads and parking areas. And then I, resolution 61649, the amount of $1,552,500 for the electrical construction package for file arm and mass notification system to install in the administrative tower building. J, resolution 61652, the amount of $80,000 for the general construction package to renovate the existing elevates and classes E, F, and H. J, K, resolution 61654, the amount of $400,000. Mr. Musgrove keeps on spinning like a crazy egg. The phase two of the restoration of building Z for new windows and doors, as well as for the repair and placement of lentils and brick repair reappointments. Resolution L, 61657, the amount of $170,000 for construction provided ADA platform lift and ramps for handicap accessibility at Bradley Hall. M, resolution 61658, the amount of $120,000 requested for the to provide new interior room and directory signage at CCB and G buildings. And resolved that requisition 61650, the amount of $208,281 for the renovation of men's and women's toilet rooms in the theater building, which we're told are in disgraceful condition and that's where the outside public very often goes. O, resolution 53942, the amount of $115,119 as requested by the executive AP placement testing for Happy Place units. This is not what is generally complained about. A good deal of explanation was made. Decision by college board, it has to do with a number of testing activities that the college does. And then that is it on those resolutions. I move then, I move that the resolutions discussed on the item one of the budget denominated items A to all inclusive of the approved, I so move.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I move my vote.
I need a second.
Oh, I can, I can move it?
Well, you moved it, John, second actually.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I was gonna oppose it, I mean the motion.
You never tell. Any abstentions?
Yeah.
Congratulations, we actually have a unanimous vote on something. Thank you, applause is all up. Okay. Mr. Donnelly, can you introduce the second item?
Item number two on page 10 in college operating budget 2013-14, resolved that NASA Community College Board of Trustees hereby approves an operating budget for the fiscal year commencing September 1st, 2013 in the amount of $213,879,542. And be it further resolved that the NASA Community College Board of Trustees recommend the adoption of the college operating budget by the NASA County Legislature and the Board of Trustees of the State University of New York.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Like to comment on it?
Well, somebody has to make a motion.
Right.
John, you make that motion.
Okay, I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
All right, how many, we have Mr. Cronatio? Anyone else opposed?
It's like the old days.
Pretty much.
The only note.
Okay, so, the vote carried, H to one.
And do you want to say anything? Or do you want to say something after I read the next one?
Now, I'd like to comment on the budget in its totality. $213,879,542 is sound in its totality. But I have issues inside this budget where we may put ourselves at financial risk sometime in the FY 2014, where we will be subject to issues with middle states accreditation possibly as violation of several SUNY guidelines with regard to unrestricted, unencumbered fund balance. There is a policy this board has passed some time ago where we allow for a 4% unrestricted fund balance, which is below the 5% to 15% guidelines. If in fact, we pierce that floor of 4%, we will in fact have to pass a resolution to do that. We will also have to go back to the county legislature and SUNY Board of Trustees. Right now, on the assumptions that we make and the fund balance that we are going to use for FY 2014 and maintaining the fund balance at 4% of about $8.5 million, we leave ourselves with an unencumbrance of about $933,000. There are assumptions made in this budget that we might use some fund balance for things possibly anticipated that may happen in FY 2014 will force us to, and if that is the case, including a drop in enrollment below the assumption of 1%, which costs us $830,000. And also, the reduction in monies that could be put forward into FY 2014 because of the reduction in enrollment for some of one and two, costing us in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $600,000. So I'm very concerned about the internals of this budget and how we manage this budget going forward. The top line amount is an amount that is acceptable, but internally, I feel we must take more action to manage this budget now and not in the middle of a possible crisis, not in September or not in December. Thank you.
And because of those comments, I would have not passed this budget. I don't believe we're putting off for tomorrow a problem that may be present today. We just create greater problems by doing it. But, one man's opinion.
Item number three, tuition and fee schedules 2013 through 2014. Resolved that the NASA Community College Board of Trustees establishes a tuition and fee schedule to be effective for the academic year 2013 slash 2014, wherein there shall be an annual increase of $98 in full-time tuition and $4 in part-time tuition, commencing with full semester 2013. And be it further resolved that the tuition and fee schedule be forwarded to the State University of New York for approval.
Do I have a motion to consider this item? I have a second.
No. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain for reasons stated before.
Okay. So no against? Eight, four. Motion carries? All right. I make a motion pursuant to Article 4, Section 1D of the Board of Rules and Procedures. Procedures, rules, or natural law for consideration of an item that was not included in the public notice of this special meeting.
I second the motion.
I need, that was the, no, another?
No, you made a motion, I see.
I made a motion, okay. Justice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Any abstentions?
I'm an aye on that.
I'm sorry?
I'm an aye on that.
You're an aye?
Okay. I was processing.
I know, I could see the C fibers working.
Yeah, smoke.
Majority of the board having voted to consider the item, the item is now before us. Mr. Cronatio, would you like to introduce his policy?
Do I have to read all this stuff?
I'm trying to use up as much air as you can.
Resolved that...
Why don't you just read the resolve?
I'm sorry?
Why don't you just read the resolve?
That's not gonna do it. Resolved that, there's a short way out, find it. Resolved that NASA Community College Board of Trustees approves and adopts the NCC green cleaning policy to read as set forth in the, in the minutes, and the agenda. I so move.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Abstentions? Motion carries? Okay, report by the temporary committee on the presidential search.
There's not that much to report. I've received non-formal indications that the chancellor, the chancellor's office will be open to receiving any candidates that we, any, any one candidate that we decide to pull open there. And that candidate would not be looked, it would choose on candidate, would not be looked at with any particular joiners. Other than NASA, there's nothing to really report. We had three candidates, I don't know if we refer to them as finalists or semi-finalists, but who would have been presented to the full board for, for interview.
Mr. Cronatio, just after you run, who did you hear that information from? At SUNY? What, what authority?
I, through an intermediary, which I don't care to name.
So hearsay?
Fairly reliable hearsay.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Which is not, which is contrary to what we have on the writing from the chancellor of the State of New York.
The writing is dated, isn't it?
Sorry?
That writing is only about May 10th or 12th or 14th.
Uh, May 14th, D L.
And you've been in communication with the chancellor's office still?
I've been in communication with the chancellor's office, their position has not changed.
Well, that surprises me because I had an indication I had changed. But I will go back to my intermediary and inquire further.
Well, at this point in time, because we are talking...
Well, why don't we finish my report?
Absolutely.
Because I've got that much to say.
Okay.
And I'm always very quick. All right, I, because I like to save my oxygen for the big names, Mr. God.
Doctor.
Doctor, go ahead. Yes.
You may be requiring my services one day.
I'm a doctor too, you know. You're not gonna give me mouth to mouth.
You are absolutely correct.
I really don't, sometimes I say things I just don't know how to say.
Yeah, just gotta chill.
They just sort of come out of my mouth. But...
I was wanting the better one.
So one of the candidates was a, an active judge of the Supreme Court. He withdrew his candidacy. And the search committee had three people, each of whom they felt could run the college. And he was one of them. And I would have liked the board to have heard from him, interviewed him, as well as I would like them to interview and hear from the other two candidates. But in many events, that's the only thing really that, that's still...
Well, what are you saying?
There's two finalists left. There's two finalists left.
Okay.
One is Elena Zofa, who used to be Alana Stern when she worked here in NASA Community College. And the other is Joyce Esther from Chicago. And that's it?
In furtherance of discussion on this, the issue that we have is that, at this point in time, we've had a couple assaults on NASA Community College. And I consider a verbal assault from the SUNY chancellor on the basis of the two emails that were sent. And one of the things that I think that we need to address as a board is that being ordered to halt the presidential search process that we have undertaken is not a problem, because that is within the confines of the autonomy of this board. But, because allegations were raised and in discussions that have been held the year before, and I've heard the faculty, the faculty is asked for due process. Faculty is asked to have their integrity cleared in a public manner. And I do not feel that that has been done. And that is something that I think that we need to address. And I've been in communication with chancellor's office to let them know that we as a board stand united in that there is autonomy here of NCC as a community. And two, that we respect the integrity and the honor with which the members of the Presidential Search Committee perform their duties. Therefore, to try to settle the issue and try to get that more in public and make it clean for everyone, what we had spoken about, and I had contacted members of the board, was to perform an independent evaluation of our presidential search process. The process that was done by the internal, by the board trustees really was not a formal report that was presented, not in a formal manner, and not one that I would describe to. Not that it was wrong, but I don't think that it met the criteria of a formal investigation. What I wish to discuss with the members of the board, and I do so in public because this is a public issue, is that I would want to perform an independent evaluation of our search process to be able to tell the SUNY, we did it right. We did it correctly, we followed the rules. There is no reason why, at the end of our process, if we have two candidates who are available, you should not consider them if we felt that they were appropriate. Unfortunately, one of the candidates has withdrawn, Judge Morano. We received notification on last Friday and went to Mr. Cronatio. But in deference, we've been able to come up with an evaluation process that would be able to go forward. And that was what I wished to discuss with the committee and the consideration of names for the hiring of a special evaluator for this process. Bless you.
Thank you. Should I take two aspirin before I go to bed?
Take two aspirin, call me in the morning.
Okay, I will.
So Mr. Cronatio, do you have any comments on that?
Well, you know, don't call him Mr. Cronatio. Well, you know, don't call me Mr. Granacho. I feel all enough sensitive, George, I call you by your first name. Call me by your first name. You see, this, this is not a new idea. It was, it was first explored on May 7th, I believe, May 7th. And, and, and people on the board objected to going that route. And people, the trustees, there were four trustees. They said that, can you hear me?
Yes.
They said that the trustees who are not, who are not on the search committee should do the investigation. And, and a number of people said they would do it. Some trustees, one trustee, I think, did not show. Two trustees did not show. Although, one of the trustees who did not show was not there at that meeting. The other trustees showed. And they, they asked people on the search committee questions. They remarked, you have a problem in the office, what do you do? You call in your employees or people who work for you, contractors, and ask them questions. And you try to determine where the credibility is. You ask for documents, you look at them. And you try to ascertain what the truth is. So half the search committee came in on a Friday, I forget what date, Friday the 10th, maybe? Okay. And they, and they met with these trustees. And there was no question in the minds of the trustees who were there, including Mr. Prime, who was also on the search committee. Jeff was chair of the department, for those of you who weren't here then. They were very, very impressed with, there was no question these people were telling the truth. And then nothing untoward happened, nothing improper happened. And one of the trustees, and the other half of the search committee had to sneeze. The other half of the search committee--
Bless you.
--was supposed to, it went away. And the other half of the search committee was gonna come in the following Tuesday and meet with the same trustees. Just get it away, George. And one of the trustees said, I'm not coming because there's no question in my mind that when I met with those eight or nine people, they were telling the absolute truth. This thing is basis. There's no question they did their job. They, and they had high and noble principles. So other trustees appeared on that Tuesday and reached the same conclusion, having spoken to the balance of the search committee that came in. And then, as we would have had a report done for the chancellor--
Tony, I'm just gonna talk for one second.
Sure, great.
Sorry.
So it's not new to have an independent investigator. And then we've had a series of public meetings where every single union and every single, I guess you could say, not club, but entity, faculty entity, okay, of substance, said, no more investigations. We don't even have a statement of charges. It's an insult, we won't subject ourselves to it. And, and, and we want this process to go forward. So for this board, George, to take a position that we heard from you, I can't tell you how many times.
Tony, I'm gonna, let me, let me go back and just clear some of the air.
But it would be sort of an insult.
No, it's not meant to be an insult. It's meant to have a clear, let's, let's go back to basics. We're in academics, okay? If you ask for a report, you want a fully detailed report that is well-written, that is well-versed, based on a hypothesis and an interview and a result based on facts. Unfortunately, on that May 10th, there were two trustees, and it was trustee Drucker and trustee DeGrace, who were there, who were the only members that were not on the presidential search committee, who were asking questions. On the following date, which was the following Tuesday, it was only trustee DeGrace, the only trustee. I, and John is a man of integrity. John is a man of complete honor, but I don't--
Which one are you talking about?
John DeGrace. John DeGrace.
How about a suit-- I wish my wife was here.
George, I was the one who didn't come on that Tuesday because I was thoroughly convinced that the integrity and ethics of--
No question.
--the search committee--
No question.
I was satisfied with it, and I thought it wasn't necessary.
But if you are going to do an evaluation of the process, okay, I'm, remember, I'm a physician, I'm a scientist. I look at everything, one, two, three, four, five, six. I have to ask the same questions of every single member of the search committee. I have to review the documents, I have to review the interactions. I then have to formulate all that information and come up with a comprehensive report. It's just the way I process when I examine a patient. I use a systematic method each and every time. And the issue, and the issue that I had, and a question that was raised by Mr. Donnelly was, I am not qualified to perform that type of evaluation because I don't do it. Now, if you tell me that you have been part of previous evaluations of presidential search committees and can attest that all the standards were followed, then my hat is off to you. And then if you provide a formal report and all the other issues. But the problem is that that was not the case. And let me just finish one point. My belief is that we have an autonomy on this board. I will not capitulate the autonomy of this board to SUNY. That will not happen. I have too much respect for the faculty and the administration and the students. That is not our job, that's why we're here. That is why we will be here for hours, I'm sure. Because this is so important to our students and to our faculty. And when I was here in the previous minutes, I listened to the passion of all, all the faculty that came up and felt that the injustice that was done of having SUNY come in and perfrontally just stop the presidential search process based on assumptions and hearsay was not right. That was not right. When I spoke to each of the members of the board several weeks ago, I said, and we were at an impasse because we were, do we stop it? Do we go? What do we do? So I reached out to each member of this board, prior to Kathy Weiss coming on board, and I asked, how can we come up with a compromise to come up as a unified board? What if we came up with an independent evaluation? Basically, that is an arm of the board. It is someone that we as a board will pick and choose to come and do the evaluation. Did we follow the standard? Please tell me if there's anything unreasonable in what I'm saying. I wanted to defend the autonomy of this board. I want to defend the integrity of the presidential search committee members. And I need to do it with a formal report that we produced to SUNY, saying what we did was right. Because if not, anything that this presidential search committee will produce will be knocked down. That is a waste of our time.
I commend you for that because what you said is 100% true. And I appreciate the fact that you've reached that conclusion after hearing all of the testimony of all the people. So based, you're a scientist and you've assessed all of the facts to this date and you've come to this conclusion is the correct one. But, well, I would like to point out, I'm a lawyer too. So we also deal with facts and conclusions.
Unsolicited information.
No, that's the report that I gave you.
I have, I have, I have your report.
Oh, okay. We are responding to what you had just said about needing evidence and, you know, I'm also--
I actually, I have the report that you gave me, it's right here in front of you.
There are situations, George, where you can over-manage, micromanage, overkill. And yes, we do need to show the chancellor and SUNY that the facts are the facts. The fact is that the memo from the chancellor to Jeff Prime was directed to him personally and requested him personally to conduct whatever was necessary so that he could report back to the chancellor that he was satisfied and the board was satisfied that things were done correctly. After meeting on that Friday evening, Jeff Prime, as the chair, was convinced that he was able to respond to the chancellor point by point and assess and assure her that things were done ethically, properly, and professionally. And he was gonna write a letter, and that's how we left it that Friday evening. And then on Saturday, for whatever personal reasons, he resigned from the board.
Arnie, just want to say, so what you're saying is that Jeff Prime on Friday night, before the evaluation process was completed, was ready to sign off on it?
Yes, am I wrong?
I can agree with that. I was, I was there as well.
He was ready to write a letter the next day, on Saturday, and send us all a letter, a copy of a letter that he was gonna send to the chancellor. That's how we left it Friday night. And then I got the email from Jeff on Saturday evening. Okay? But my point is, is that if in fact we're down to two finalists, if we can interview these two finalists and recommend one to SUNY, let the chancellor make a decision. I think that preserves the integrity of the presidential search committee. Then their decision, it's her decision what she's gonna do. We're upholding the results and the process of the search committee. And based on what Tony is saying here, and I'm not doubting whether it's hearsay or not, but if he has some person who's telling him that the chancellor might be more neutral in her consideration at this point in time, why not just, we're at the, the finish line is right ahead of us.
I can, I can tell you--
To now go back to an investigation that can take weeks, to me, it's overkill. We should have public officials, you have non-college-- first of all, college people won't tolerate it, okay? Whether they're right or wrong, I have to think they're right. They will not tolerate an outside entity coming in and speaking to them, whether it's a hiring of the board or not. Secondly, you have non-college personnel who are on that search committee. A county legislator, a town headster councilman, a town attorney of voice debate. You had someone running for the Nassau County Legislature in Baldwin now, who represented the community. A number of people. They would not, first of all, they'd be offended and they would never, never, never agree to something like that. They'd be the subject of an inquiry like that. First of all, and most people who are clean would have that attitude, George.
Well, the first question I always raise is, we are in the United States of America where all of us are equal, whether we be a state official, a county official, academic, board of trustee members, doesn't matter. We are all created equal. And what I'm talking about was an evaluation of our process. Did we follow the standard? And that's the only question, because that was what was raised. So I have the absolute confidence in the integrity and the way that everybody conducted themselves. There's no question in my mind. But we need to be able to answer that in a public document that was independently evaluated. We cannot do a self-assessment on this. It, it's, it really does not look correct.
Well, again, Doc, I commend you because you're trying very, very hard to, to, to make this work. And I do commend you. You and I spoke, obviously, I wanted to agree with you. I do agree with the concept. The problem, and Tony brought this up, is after you and I spoke, I reached out to a number of members who are on the search committee. And they told me that they would absolutely not be part of that. So with that in mind, we cannot afford my eyes. That's the way I feel.
Okay, one question. When we act, we act on goals and principles. And we decide if something is right or not. If we feel that it is correct process, I can't-- when, this is not a subpoena, we're not bringing anybody to the table. What we're trying to do is evaluate what our process was. Why do we hide, Mr. Howard is a famous one for saying, let it be brought out to the light of day. So let us bring this out to the light of day. Let us show to the chancellor that what we did was right. Let us have a formal report that we present, okay, that shows what we did was correct, the integrity of our members. I heard every single member that came up was insulted by SUNY. Every single member. And I took that to heart. And I learned the lesson that night. I learned the lesson about the autonomy of this board, how we must be a united front for this community, for this college, for the 24,000 students, for whoever the next president is going to be. We have to make sure that everything that was done was done through standard process. And to show that to anyone who even questions what that is. And not only will we be questioned, we will be questioned by the chancellor of the state of New York.
George, I think we all agree with that ideal. That is the wonderful ideal. I think every one of us here agrees with that. But it's not workable. It's not workable. Because you can, even if we go to the length, the effort of getting an outside independent party to conduct an investigation, if they're not able to interview and talk to each of the members of the search committee, then they're gonna have an incomplete investigation. They're not gonna give you, they're not gonna be able to give you this comprehensive report that you want. So you're gonna be wasting time. But they want, if they're not gonna be able to conduct interviews and assess the facts of every member of the search committee, they'll be unable to fulfill their function of conducting a thorough, independent, comprehensive investigation. And that comprehensive report that you wanna get to give to SUNY will be lagging weeks and weeks and months and months. George, you had done-- Oh, I'm sorry. Please, just Catherine, please.
I know I'm the new person here, but I've listened very carefully to what everybody's had to say. And as a person who's looking at this a little bit from the outside, it seems to me that there is nothing to lose with bringing in somebody who's independent, who doesn't know a soul. I appreciate whatever that report is, I don't know what it is. Or my fellow board members who listen to people. But when somebody comes in who doesn't know the people, comes in with a totally open mind, with no agenda, not beholding to whomever, we as a board will more likely get something that we can stand up proud and tall and say, the process was what it was supposed to be. I'm sitting here in a hearing, hearsay, Tony heard hearsay. George says he spoke to people from the chancellor's office. I'm listening to other people say things. It seems to me that any member of the search committee who believes that the integrity of that search was appropriate would be happy and willing to speak to an independent party to say, this is what took place. It is something that I personally would be much more comfortable with as a new board member, to have an outside pair of eyes looking at this.
I just wanna ask one thing. What is the plan of the search committee right now?
The don-- The don--
So you are going to be recommending two chancellor?
No. Directing to the board. To the board. What, what? Just, we have two candidates--
I want the public to hear this. Because I want all of us to be on--
We have two candidates. Right. And, and, and pretty much the public of people at the college, and they've said this all along, present those two candidates to the board. First of all, to the, have what they call campus interviews, which you ran last time, there was a surge. Okay? You speak to the faculty. There's an hour or two where the students come in, ask questions, they give talk to the students, administrators. Okay, they get to know, see the campus. Then they have an interview before the board. And then the board, if, if any one candidate gets six votes, okay? Obviously, two candidates get six votes each. Because any one, two people will be present. One of them has to be picked, one of the two has to be picked. We send the name up to SUNY. We get it off our plate, we get it out of here. Let SUNY, as a SUNY board of trustees, not the chancellor, by the way. Chancellor has no authority whatsoever. She may be able to control her board, but as the SUNY board of trustees, let them handle it. We've got serious labor problems. We're gonna have a strike in September. This place is gonna be shut tight. Let's start addressing the serious labor problems we have and get this off our minds, get it off our desks, get it off our plate. Let SUNY handle it. And whatever SUNY does, hey, God bless SUNY. Let SUNY handle it. And whatever SUNY does, hey, God bless SUNY, do what you think you should do. You have, they have conscience, those trustees, let them do what they think they should do. We'll do what our obligations are. And, and, because if we don't handle this problem, the coming September problem, the classrooms will not be functioning. Our basic obligation is to provide education to the students, make sure the classrooms are open and instruction is being held. We've got serious work to do here. Get rid of this thing. It's a distraction.
I have never been one to sweep an item under the rug because it is not comfortable, because it is not addressed. I think that this is an open issue, and it is an open wound that will not heal. It is items that have been levied upon Nassau Community College as a community, and we as Nassau Community College community need to reply. The way that I see for this to reply is for us to go forward and have an independent evaluation of the process. Once that evaluation is done, and we have reached our conclusions, then we can proceed with the two candidates that we have.
Can I ask you this, George? Suppose, hello? Suppose, 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 George, you get your vote, okay? We appoint an independent investigator, we go huddle downstairs.
Evaluator.
Evaluate, whatever, okay. Everybody's gonna say it's a monitor, an investigator, a screwdriver. And then guess what? Which would probably happen? Your campus people will refuse to subject themselves to an interview. Your non-campus people-
Why, why?
Because it has to do with pride, it has to do with the-
You asked, you asked, the faculty came up before the speaker in public session and said, "We want due process, we want to be able to respond."
Due process?
To, to-
There are no charges?
There are no specific charges.
Investigation.
What's due process when there are no charges? The emails from May 7th and the 14th.
But tell them you're what else we're really going to-
SUNY presented no evidence.
Yeah.
We can move to summary, because SUNY presented no evidence.
We could talk about May 7th, the May 14th, and then we could also, those two emails. And we could talk about the young lady that came down representing the chancellor, who basically hung her hat on the fact that, well, we have to get this out of the newspapers. Meanwhile, it was in the newspapers as a one-sided story with innuendo, falsehoods, and lies. Because I'll tell you right now, I of course was at all the Presidential Search Committee meetings when I was, after I was appointed, was also at that May 10th meeting, when I can attest to the fact, as a Presidential Search Committee member who was interviewed that night, that Jeff Prime was gonna write that letter, and that we were gonna respond to the chancellor.
Yeah, but we can't-
Okay, well, now I'm telling, I'm gonna, I'm trying to explain to you that there's another person, it's not hearsay, it was me there, as a Presidential Search Committee member. And I'll tell you right now, as a Presidential Search Committee member, I will not be subjected to a outside counsel, litigator, interrogator, whatever you wanna call him, because this impugns the integrity of every member on that search committee. And forget about the elected officials, but the people that I come to know on that Presidential Search Committee, the majority, they will not subject themselves either. You already heard them. Did you reach out to the rest of the Presidential Search Committee members to find out if they would subject themselves to this, so we don't waste tens of thousands of dollars on an investigation that will be-
I reached out to every member of the board, and-
Of the search committee?
Of the board of trustees.
But did you ask the search committee members?
Of the board of trustees, two weeks ago, I spoke with Mr. Howard, and you agreed. Mr. DeGrace agreed, Mr. Drucker agreed.
Agreed to what?
Agreed to go with an independent evaluation.
Where is that written?
I did agree, but then after you and I spoke, I reached out to members on the search committee, and they told me they would not comply to that. That's what I'm trying to say.
I understand, but I have to ask a question, and maybe it's beyond me. Are we as a board of trustees and a trustee member of Nassau Community College, when we make a decision, are we not making a decision amongst ourselves? Or are we going to do this as a public vote on every single thing that we consider?
What is that meaning?
In other words, you have, okay, you have different opinions out in the public faculty. Some say they want something, some say they do not. Do we go on a majority vote? Does each board member ally himself with one group or another? Or do we as a board look for the good of the college going forward as a whole?
Yes, we do. This is a representative republic, and we represent constituents, and therefore we-
You have constituents?
Yeah.
What is a constituent?
The college.
Other than the 24,000 students?
The college, that's constituents. This is a representative republic, not a democracy, in case you don't know the difference. So therefore, we make an informed judgment and vote accordingly in public in front of the constituents. That's what we do.
Any further discussion at this time? I will read it up one more time. What is that motion at this point?
Which motion are we bringing up?
I'm going to make a motion pursuant to Article 4, Section 1B, in order to allow for the consideration of a matter that was not included in the public notice and special meeting. The motion that I wish to bring up again is the motion that was brought up originally, which was a motion to discuss the choice and appointment of outside counsel to undertake a complete review and evaluation of the activity. This is just a motion to bring it up, which we have been discussing anyway in public form, and be able to take a formal vote on it, but I need to be able to bring it up as a motion. So, again, a motion to discuss the choice of appointment of outside counsel to undertake a complete review of the evaluation of the activities of the Presidential Search Committee to enable the entire board of trustees to review such work, activities, and practices and determine the appropriateness thereof, executive session being warranted, to permit discussions of matters relating to the performance of the committees and its members and the selection of particular candidates.
We voted on this.
No, I'm bringing this up as a motion just to bring it up. We've discussed it, we haven't brought it up.
We voted, right, yes or no? We voted on it. We voted on it.
Yeah.
Five-four.
Five-four.
Boy, when you have an idea you think is a good idea, you make cluster effort, you really believe it, it's obvious you do. And I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm saying you gotta come up with a solution that's gonna work. And if the people that are part of this college, the community that make up this college, say, "We will not go for that," you gotta respect that. You can't come up with a remedy that's not gonna work, then, then, then we'll have shit all over our faces. The whole college, the ground stays everywhere. Think about it, George.
Rules be waived to allow some audience or faculty?
No, you'll have to wait for a public session.
I understand.
Please, and I'm sure you will have, you will be able to-
That might help this-
Well, why don't we ask Rochelle Hens, those who are on the search committee?
No.
Would you agree to this?
At this, all right, at this point in time, since it's no longer further, I will ask for a report of the acting president.
Good evening. I'd just like to begin, I'd like to begin by welcoming Dr. Kathy Weiss to the board, and Jocelyn, our student trustee, to the board, and this will be-
Welcome.
I'd like to also share that today we learned that an amendment that was filed with the clerk of the legislature last night with respect to the county's capital plan for 2013 through 2016 includes a $4 million allocation for the Performing Artists Building, which represents a commitment of $2 million from the county and $2 million from the state. The 2013-16 capital plan, which this item is a part, will go to the county legislators for a hearing and hopefully passage this next Monday. We are very much appreciative of the support from the county executive, Ben Gano, and chief deputy county executive, Rob Walker, in putting this arrangement together, and also for the support from Senator Chuck Fraschillo, who was key in securing the commitment of more than $20 million from the state several years ago. I would also like to just thank Joe Moscarella, Carol Freeman, Dan Fisher, and Chuck Cottolo for their efforts on this project as well. I'm pleased to announce that we have received, SUNY has, that Nassau has received a grant for the SUNY High Needs Award. The funding, it was for $232,411 for renovation of laboratories in the surgical tech program. It will also provide for $50,000 in additional TA hours. These are funds that will help us to refurbish our facilities in a way that will allow our students to study in a venue that will more closely align with the type of work environments they will be moving into upon graduation. I'd like to personally thank Ed Capel, who was the author of this grant, and Caroline Kaufman, who worked with him in providing necessary information for the awarding of this grant. We were also the recipients of the SUNY Innovative Instruction Technology Award for $10,000, which will be used for the development of a multimedia workspace in the library. I'm also pleased to share with you that we have finally received the final memorandum to the president's on the seamless transfer process. There will be a meeting this coming Monday with the Academic Senate Executive Committee to go through the details of that memorandum, to talk about a strategy in terms of how we will move forward. I'm also pleased to announce that on July 1st, Nassau Community College will be launching its new Discovery Center initiative. The Discovery Center initiative is really a powerful informational, interactive experience developed for anyone considering college to access information about Nassau Community College online. It was designed and engineered for accessibility, convenience, and today's marketing computer-savvy generation who receive content on any number of digital devices. It is devised, an initiative that employs sight, sound, and motion as video to deliver content across popular technologies. This is an initiative that will allow us to reach students in a much more efficient way, in a much more cost-effective way, and will allow students who are really tied into the technology to begin to become more familiar with Nassau Community College through this vehicle. It will have an opportunity to, faculty will be able to talk about the programs that we have available to them. They can access information about financial aid, they'll get an information on a virtual tour of the campus. It's a really incredible tool that has been developed. For example, Joe Moscarella will be walking on campus, giving a physical tour of the facilities as a component of it. That will be rolled out on July 1st, and I'm looking forward to that, and I ask that you just stay tuned for that. I also want to thank Janice Rackett and the core leadership team for the outstanding work they have done on assembling the steering committee for the Middle States Review. I would also like to thank the faculty and the staff who volunteered or have accepted a nomination to serve on this important committee. And that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
We will proceed with the speakers list. Mr. Allen, just a second, five to three minutes. And as always, I ask that we all be respectful of our speakers, although I think we're gonna have a very kajike group tonight. Mr. Boyd?
Good evening, my name is Ed Boyd, I'm in the history department, I'm chair of the Academic Senate. On behalf of the Senate, I'd like to welcome the two new trustees to the board. I'm sure you will find it all a very interesting experience, as you probably have produced already so far. The other thing I'd like to do is, I would like to urge the board to proceed with the Presidential search. Bring the two finalists who have not withdrawn to campus for interviews, for open forums, for town meetings, for whatever is appropriate. Let us hear what they have to say, let us evaluate them, and if it turns out that none of them meets our needs, fair enough. If it doesn't turn out that way, let's recommend somebody. We really do need to put this to bed. Other thing is, my colleague, Dr. Reiser of the Biology Department, gave you the last time we met, a full response to some of the allegations that have been made about the search, containing evidence and documentation, responding to everything that has been made. I urge you to consider that very, very seriously in everything you do. Thank you.
Mr. Reiser?
I would, I'm sorry, you're-
Chris Schwaben, I would like to yield my minutes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to first speak about open meeting law, and then speak about the Presidential Search Committee, of which most of you know I was a member. The public policy of the State of New York is found in Public Officers' Law, Section 100 states. I quote, "It is essential to the maintenance of a democratic society that public business be performed in an open and public manner, and that the citizens of the state be fully aware of and able to observe the performance of public officers, and attend and listen to the deliberations and discussions." Several times during the last three years, the Executive Committee of the Senate expressed its concern to the president and EVP that the board was violating open meeting law. The answer was always the same. Mr. Cottolo advises the board, and he would never allow a violation of open meeting law. When speaking with faculty colleagues at other community colleges around the state, I learned that much of the trustees' discussions occur in public session, such as the approval of specific raises for administrators, including college attorneys. I do not understand why the NCC faculty had to foil these requests in order to gain information we were entitled to under open meeting law. If these deliberations occurred in public session, I imagine there would have been quite an outcry, especially as trustees were granting raises to administrators, while at the same time faculty lines were not renewed, faculty lost their jobs, the remaining faculty were asked to do more with less, and student tuition increased. In terms of the search committee, I, as a member of the search committee, do not support yet another investigation. As I articulated at the last meeting, the chancellor asked for an investigation, and that investigation did occur. In fact, Dr. Gordon, we have been waiting for you to attend the meeting on Friday. I remember we had called you several times. I attended both sessions in good faith. As a result of those sessions, it was determined that the search committee did nothing wrong. To be subjected to yet another investigation borders on absurdity. That, I'll leave it at that. At the last meeting, I provided you with a four-page letter from the search committee with evidence about, a little under 50 pages, with 22 separate appendices, which negated the chancellor's assertions. I provided each of you, Vice Chancellor Duncan Potier, and SUNY Senior Counsel with copies. I assume that you have all taken your responsibilities as trustees of Nassau Community College seriously, and read through the letter, and received the evidence. I, like you, Dr. Gordon, am trained in medicine, I have my PhD from NYU Medical School, so my discipline is evidence-based, and thus I provided the evidence. Unfortunately, the SUNY trustees were not afforded the same opportunity that you all received, despite the fact that I sent the search committee report with the evidence to each SUNY trustee by certified United States Postal Service mail. The secretary of the board, the SUNY board, Bill Howard, who happens to be SUNY Senior Counsel, who attended our board meeting with Vice Chancellor Duncan Potier, and heard our rebuttal, did not distribute the letter to the trustees. I am deeply concerned about that. Why? Well, because such controlling of information by SUNY officials impedes the search for our new president, just as having closed sessions of the board that should be open does as well. And lastly, I'd like to refer to this motion that appeared this evening. I see it was sent by Mr. Cottolo at 3:10 PM, where you're asking that there be an appointment of outside counsel. I guess you call that person an evaluator. To permit discussions of matters relating to the, quote, "performance of the committee" and "performance of its members." If this were to proceed, I expect that the college will pay for counsel for the search committee members, because I certainly would not appear without counsel. Thank you. for the search committee members, because I certainly would not appear without counsel. Thank you.
Phyllis Curlett?
I'm Phyllis Curlett. I'm the Office of Student Activities, Department of Student Personnel Services, and we run freshman orientation. You have two new members of the board. You had a rough time. You need a present, and I have it. And this is what we give...
What are the Mr. Granchos' words tonight?
This is what we give to new freshmen who are starting to register, right after they register, and I thought you'd like to see it. I have plenty, if anyone else wants it. It's a book with about the college, a pen with an orientation phone number, the student activities phone number, and bookmark. So I'm going to give it to you. And the pens have a flashlight.
Dennis Escobar? Frank Prusenda?
Good evening. Frank Prusenda, Vice President, NCCFT. Ms. Malina, Ms. Weiss, thank you for coming, and we welcome you here. Good luck. We'll, we'll thank you. You know, this is a really interesting board meeting. You know, tell us how you really feel. But what, what really, what really concerns me is, you know, the whole discussion as to whether or not to have this independent evaluator. And you had made a comment, Mr. Gordon, about, Dr. Gordon, about the, you know, does the board have a constituency? Does the board do what's in the best interest? But yet you're working, to work in a vacuum, in the sense where, you know, talking about this evaluator coming and not recognizing the fact that no one is going to speak to this evaluator. I mean, that's a vacuum beyond vacuums, okay? What a waste of a discussion, I mean, because it's not happening. You could have the inquisition from now till it freezes over, okay? But they're not coming, all right? It's insulting, okay, and it's just not going to happen. What I, what I want to know is, think about all the meetings we've had, all the money we've spent, all the anger, all the angst, everything that has happened, all right, in the newspaper. Instead of asking about the integrity of the search committee, it's killing me. How did this start? Who made the allegations? What were the allegations? And let's call that person or those people on the carpet and find out why they started this problem. If there's a problem, all right, it's not the members of the search committee. It's whoever blew this whistle that started this whole problem.
We never said it was the members of the search committee. We never said there was a problem with the members of the search committee.
Then let's not have an investigation of the search committee. Let's have an investigation of whoever started this mess.
It's an evaluation of the search process.
You're missing the point. I'm not arguing, all right? I want to know, why is there no investigation as to who started this lie? That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thomas Jackson?
Good evening, Thomas. Good evening, Dr. Gordon. How are you? How are you, new board members? Welcome to the two new board members. My name is Thomas Jackson. I am the President of Student Government here. I was just, I just wanted to let you guys know that also as part of my duties and things I do here on campus, I've had the pleasure of meeting students that are applying for admission over the past couple of days, for the past eight hours today and eight hours rest today. So the one thing that I did get from them, because it's kind of hard to poll students that are here in the summer, I think it's like 50% from other schools, and 50% are from our students, and they kind of have an apathy level, you know, that I'm dealing with, anyway. But what I am getting is that they, they're only basing on what they see in the news and what they hear, what they read in Newsday. And, you know, there is kind of a negative connotation that's hanging over Nassau at the moment. I know that, you know, everyone's arguing back and forth with different groups, trying to, you know, find the best result to, you know, not damage pride and hearsay and allegation, whatever the case may be. But I'm just, why would everyone remember that, you know? It's getting out there, and it's going to affect our students. And I think we need to resolve it quickly and efficiently.
Robert Carvino?
He's, he's not here. He left.
Okay. Gene Decker?
He also left.
Charles Loykano?
He also is not here.
Mr. Nicholson, Professor Nicholson?
He's here.
Doctor, professor, I'm sorry.
Dr. Gordon, Dr. Saunders, members of the board. I'm Philip Nicholson. I'm Chairman of the Department of History, Political Science, and Geography. I'd like to welcome the two trustees and wish you well. The college needs you. As you can tell, it needs the service of attributed board members like, like you all are, I hope. But I'm, I'm saying that because tonight I have no fear. I have put in my papers to retire at the end of this summer, August.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I also have nothing to gain, so my comments tonight will be, I think, as straightforward and honest as they have always been. I think there are some serious things that are missing, and there are some problems in terms of what we have as a school. I'll start with what I think we have. We have a deadlock board. The problem of this search is really the responsibility of the board, not an outsider, not the chancellor, and not any other external body. The board was well on the way to resolving this. You described it very well tonight. You should resolve it among yourselves, and you should resolve it tonight. If the search is not satisfactory to the board, then you should tell us why. Tell the community why. Tell Newsday why the search was not satisfactory to the board. Otherwise, assert to the chancellor and everyone else and the public that you are satisfied with the search and you wish to proceed. If you are looking for some saintly figure out in the universe to come in and second-guess what went on and to write some report, most of us are skeptical about that. And I, I would applaud and congratulate those who say, "They're finished with this." What else do we have besides the divided board? I think we have a failed administration. I'm sorry to say that. It failed to distinguish itself from its predecessor, the ASTRAP administration. Several of the things that were put in place then have never been corrected. This year, some additional failures have popped up. This administration has failed to include faculty on its Middle States interim evaluation report, the first time that's been done in my 47 years that I know about at this institution. The administration also has failed to take a leadership position in ways that it needed to this year. We are facing a seamless transfer credit crisis with SUNY. No direction, no leadership has been asserted in how we might resolve this particular crisis. We also have a failure in coming forward in a forthright way about the search. We have an administrator, a CDO, a very fine man, a nice man, a good man, who was not a finalist. He has not said publicly to anybody that I know of why he might have felt the search was flawed, nor has his affirmative action officer, who sat on the search committee, said to anyone that I know of publicly why the search was flawed. If they, who are part of this, can't come forward to you, the board, how can you go forward with the belief that it may have even had any flaws to it? I know my time is up. What's missing here at the college right now is real, forthright, and strong academic leadership. We have not had an academic vice president since, I guess, the departure of Jack Osling, who was an academic who could relate, understand, and had experience working with academic problems and issues at the college. We are still absent that, and there is no indication that that will be resolved until, until the new president takes office, and that should be done as soon as possible. That is your primary job, and I wish you well, and I hope you can resolve it tonight. Thank you.
Just as a comment, this board on May 16th defeated a motion to suspend the presidential search. Now, it was very easy for me to have campus visits, campus interviews, whatever they're called. I'm just wondering, if we had campus interviews, would we be able to get members of this board to appear to interview these two finalists?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Really? Well, because I've been under the impression I can't get the trustees to interview the finalists. I'm wrong in that assumption? All right, I'll set up the end campus interviews, and I'll, I'll clear the table with you folks. The one who's local is not a problem. The one in Chicago, I just have to see what her calendar is, you know?
I'm not sure if we have the...
We got the right. We got the right.
We had the right to do what?
To proceed and do what the next steps in the search would be. And then if we choose somebody, I don't know if we will or will not.
We, there was no motion to carry it. They were, both motions were defeated.
No, no, no. The motion to suspend the search was defeated.
And the motion to, and the news. And the motion to proceed was also suspended.
No, 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 no.
Let's read the minutes.
Right.
Both motions were...
The only other motion there was to... The other motion was to respond to the chancellor's emails, and that was a vote of five to three. So, but the motion to suspend the presidential search was defeated, three to five. So the existing, no, no problem with me going forward with the campus interviews. I just figured that this court would walk and interview the finalists.
Anthony, can you describe the campus interview process?
I'm sorry?
Can you describe the campus interview process?
Yeah, what happens is, it's very easy. We get a room. Generally, it's a big room that they have in CCB building, I think it's called, which I can never find unless someone takes me by the hand. But it's a big room, and you schedule, you put out something on all NCC. There's a period, and hopefully we can do this all in one day, where for two or three hours, students come. They, the candidates make a speech to the students. Students ask them questions. Then for another two hours, the faculty comes, and they make a speech to the faculty. The faculty asks whatever questions they want to ask, and they're pretty rough, because I attended the one that Mary conducted a couple of years back. They had some pretty probing, piercing questions. Ouch. Then, then I think the administrators are the next one. They come, and they meet, and that's it. The two candidates will go through that, and then what we'll do is schedule both of them for interviews on the same day with the board. And then the board would ask its questions and make a determination as to whether, whether any of the two are satisfactory or not.
What would be the possibility of just having the campus interviews about the board proceed? How would you feel about that?
See, the problem with that is that we're really misleading. We're really misleading the candidates. We'd be having them in with the expectation they're going to have an interview, and then...
The candidates have been informed, hopefully, that the Board of Trustees, SUNY Board of Trustees, uphold the chancellor's notion that nothing that comes out of NCC current presidential search will be proved.
They're aware of that, yes. They're also aware of the fact that it's a little bit premature, and that can change. Because I told them that.
So instead of having the process include the board, because that right now seems a little difficult, why wouldn't we take a baby step, excuse the technical term, to have the candidates come in to meet with the three groups that you just said exclusively? What's the end, what's the end game of that? It's part of the process. But when they reach that certain point, then what do you tell them? Then we, we get the feedback from the three groups that met them, and then we decide where we go from there, if at all.
What's normally done is...
That's not the process. We're way beyond normal.
Yeah, yeah, but what's normally done on all campuses is, if there's a feedback form...
I'm trying to get a compromise here.
Okay.
Do we have some movement? If we can get the Board of Trustees to agree to the campus process that you just described, it ends, it begins and ends with the room that you can't find, right? And then we get feedback from everybody. The board is presented with feedback from everybody, or through the search committee. And then we take it to the next step, which would be the review by the board.
I don't know. Is that workable?
I'm asking, I'm asking the board if they would be interested in that process.
I don't think our opinion should change from tonight than when after we get feedback from the various entities out there. We should have an opinion now whether we want to go forward and adhere to the process that's normally in place of this situation or not. Now, I think that was the vote.
I've heard people for the last two meetings talk about coming together and trying, and tonight specifically, talking about reaching some type of consensus or compromise to move forward. I'm asking the board if they would consider this, and I'll move a motion to consider having the campus interviews proceed with the two candidates that the Presidential Search Committee has recommended, and then for the Presidential Search Committee to report back to the board based on that campus process, as opposed to nothing happening again for another week.
Then I agree, then I agree with that. As a compromise, it's, it's fine.
So I'd like to offer a motion to have the campus interviews proceed. Actually, just put it down first as a motion to be brought before the calendar. I'd like to have a motion to consider something that has not been put on the calendar. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to make a motion to have the two candidates brought to the campus to interview with the three constituencies that Tony alluded to, named earlier. They would not meet with the board. They would meet with the three groups. And then the Presidential Search Committee would report back to the board on the findings of the three groups. Do I have a second?
I have a question. Do you need a second, or you can ask a question?
You can ask a question first.
I can't, just, my question is the feedback to the board. Would the people to whom these candidates be meeting provide some kind of a format that they individually inform, that they fill out?
Yeah.
So that not, because that's not what you said. You said the search committee would give us the information.
Well, they...
Okay. I'm just, I'm looking, I'm just trying to understand the process, that we'd be getting the feedback not flowed through. We'd be getting the feedback through...
Correct.
The forms hit for that.
That's what I meant.
Do I have a second?
You've got a question.
I have another question. Here, sorry.
Now, will your candidates be the same that were interviewed originally?
The candidates would be the two that have been recommended by the committee.
Could you have another one?
No.
I think we should try to stick with the two, no.
No one else has applied.
That's it.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
How many opposed?
Two.
Two opposed. The motion passes.
Three opposed.
Three opposed.
Four opposed.
Four opposed. The motion dies.
I just have to make a comment. I, I'm just, let me finish a comment, please. I find it cruel and unusual to string along two presidential candidates in a process that is doomed for failure.
Well, we'll never know.
We'll never know, because it has no chance of success by the SUNY board. We have not given ourselves a chance to clean up the process and present it.
I can appreciate, I can appreciate... I can appreciate, I can appreciate trustee Donnelly trying to come to a consensus here. But as a member of the presidential search committee, we need to see this to the end. We need to finish this off. One of the finalists already lost their job out east. And the other ones in general. Are we gonna just let them hang and then let them come here and hang some more and go back home? And we'll let you know if the board ever wants to get to you as credible candidates or not. We need to have this search completed.
This all or nothing approach is getting nowhere. Nothing is going to happen. You had an opportunity here to at least get the candidates back in to have some type of evaluation and movement and process. We have nothing now.
The...
It's incredulous to me that you voted against this.
I vote against it because we need to finish it. Because I don't need investigations popping up again to say that they're gonna...
Stop with the investigation.
I wish you would. I wish you and the doctor would stop with the investigations. Then we can move along.
I just offered something.
Well, I vote no. I vote no, why? Because we gotta finish this off. Because we have a strike coming on this campus. Because the budget is, there's gonna be issues with the budget and we need to deal with that and get this over with and get it done. Going halfway at this point is not gonna work. We voted to continue the search. The search was not suspended in there, so the search should go forward.
It's all or nothing.
The search should go forward.
All or nothing.
And as Tony Canaccio said several years ago, we'll do our job as the board.
Tony Canaccio voted for the motion.
That's fine, that's fine. He votes his way, I vote my way. I'm telling you right now, what did he say? He said, "We'll do our board as the board of trustees and let SUNY do their job." Just in your window that it's not gonna be acceptable up there or not. Send the two candidates up and let's see what they do. Because again, when the representative, the vice chancellor came down, she hung her hat on Newsday reports. That we have to settle this and we have to move forward because of Newsday reports. I mean, are we serious?
We've got a...
Well, I'm explaining right now why and the vote is no. I'm just wondering, what's the sense of the board about... I understand your position, Johnny. But what's the sense of the board about scheduling the campus interviews and board interviews with the campus? Is there a sense that we...
Is there an objection?
Is there any objection?
I have no objection.
I don't have an objection, no.
Now, that's a different motion. Well, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to see, I guess, all right?
That's the converse of...
Make a motion to the... Make a motion. All right, so...
Make a motion.
They make a motion.
Make a motion.
Continue. Yes. No, no, I'm trying to get a sense before...
Should the process...
I'll tell you what, while you guys are considering your thoughts, show of color, continue to public comments.
Well, can I just...
You know, I don't have two more people left. Let them have their say. You've had your say all night. Could you, Sheldon?
Welcome, new trustees. I'm Sheldon Khan. I have to deal with, I'm friends with practically everybody here except that relentless, the time they asked Ronald Reagan, "Why wouldn't he negotiate with the Russian prime ministers?" And he says, "They keep dying on me." And what's happening here with the board is, you guys are just disappearing. At any rate, yeah, at least you're not dying. I say this in all seriousness and certainly with no malice. Number one, this isn't the no-malice part. Number one, we all agree, hopefully all, almost all, that the search committee did its job the way it's supposed to do. I understand where Dr. Gordon is coming from. But I believe that basically the chancellor acted prematurely and her charges are groundless.
I agree.
I don't know whether they fall to the level of frivolous. But for us to respond to those charges is to legitimize them. And I do not think we ought to do that. Instead, let's see them respond to our charge. That they're way off base here. The other thing is that I have to ask myself, would we be in this position if it didn't seem like this is all in the name of a do-over? And I wonder what would have happened if President Saunders, acting president, had been one of the three finalists? I have to tell you that I really question the leadership of the administration and especially on May 7th. When I can't imagine President Saunders, that you did not know what was gonna happen. That you did not foresee the effect it would have on our reputation. That you did not see what was going to happen in Newsday. It was a circus and you let them in. And I can't support that kind of leadership. I think there's a time for a leader who's a good leader to take one for the team. And I think President Saunders, if you would say, "Look, I am not going to be available to succeed as the next president of Nassau Community College." I think you would have done a tremendous amount to diffuse this situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I pass. What I'd like to do is just get back to another sensitive board thing. So, we have, if I were to make a reso... If I were to make a resolution that we have the campus interviews and then have board interviews. How many of you board members would be willing to be present for board interviews? One to two? Mary, I thought you voted yes before.
No, I voted no.
You voted?
That I would be available for it.
Oh, you did, okay, all right.
And I'll do my search.
Oh, yeah, right, okay. So, you're four of them, okay. George? Okay, so one, two, three, four.
By the way, let me just amend that. I would accept the two candidates that were produced by the presidential search process once evaluation of that process was done.
Excellent. And Jasmine, what are your positions?
If nothing else, I'm interested.
Exactly.
Can you do it?
Jasmine. Jasmine, why don't I apologize? I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Horrible place the matter is now.
That's not the worst.
What's your position on this?
You're just taking, you're just taking which, you know...
Well, if I strive to struggle with a new... I'd like to know...
No, 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 just...
No, no. And John?
Yes.
So, one, two, four, five.
Would you ask John?
Oh, I, I thought you were gonna say no.
Oh, boy, you didn't ask.
John?
Yeah.
Five, five, four.
Right, so, just to be clear, this was to go to add on to the previous motion that we would do the interviews but not take action for or against candidates. So, we don't want to do that either. So, we went to that point and we had to do that either.
Continue and pass.
No motion there.
No passion. But I have a question. If I'm gonna do that, don't we have to have a high vote to be president? I have to be very honest.
Ideally, we should, but I mean, they're...
No, for the interviews.
Yes, we should, we should. But if we have six board members, we could at least... I'm trying to work through... Boy, just try to get things that work out a problem.
And that was the sense of the board to make a motion and let's vote on it. Let's vote on it. We voted on the other one, let's vote on this one.
Well, first you have to breathe as a motion to be considered.
I make a motion to consider the following. Consider an item that's not on the calendar.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
How many ayes?
How many noes?
One?
Yeah, just to discuss it.
Put it on the...
To put it to discuss it.
Yeah, right, discuss it, that's...
Are there any noes? Any abstentions?
How many noes?
One no.
No?
Any abstentions?
No, 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 you don't vote somebody else's. In my opinion, if a board member wants to add something to the... That's fine.
All right, then I'll change it for discussion.
Oh, discussion, okay.
Because we have not discussed this enough yet.
All right. So, what is the final thing?
So, now you have to breathe out.
We already know, we already know that we can receive the campus interviews. We don't need a board resolution for that. So, my question is, if...
Wait, 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 wait.
No, 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 we can't.
You had a motion.
The vote, the procedure earlier, that months ago, is set a timetable and that timetable is still in effect.
But you put a motion on the floor and it was defeated. So, on computers.
The motion?
To continue with the...
The motion's aye for having campus interviews.
Yeah, but, but, but we, there was a timeline that the board approved a long time ago that's still in effect, it's never been reversed. It's never been reversed by another board motion.
I specifically asked you that and it was defeated.
It was defeated, yes, but the other motion, the whole search motion, still is alive there.
What are you saying, you may even know so short?
Well, that's what I'm saying. All right, I don't want to do, I don't want to do, I don't want to do the ridiculous, all right? I could have done that all along, just have the campus interviews, but I don't want to put people through that unless there's... So, now my question is, assuming that we schedule campus interviews, will this board agree to interview the two semifinals? All right?
So, say all in favor?
I move the motion.
All in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three. All opposed?
One, two, three, four, five.
All abstained?
Maybe I go in for one.
Abstained? All right. The motion is not carrying.
All right, so, here we are.
All right, the next one is, capital meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 17th, 2013, at 5:00 P.M., followed by the full board meeting. The board will be open to public session at 6:30 P.M. and resume the public session possibly 8:00 P.M. I request a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
No vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All four?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstaining? Something else that we didn't hear this, congratulations.